...a reading about Canton City Council's order. Ask if you'd join me in a moment of silence, please. Thank you. We respect the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Guests, we don't have any sign in, do we? Did you sign in?
Sure, I did, Mark.
Okay, well, that's okay. We'll talk to you in a minute. Laura Meadows with the Upsher County Convention and Visitor Bureau, annual report.
Yes, where would you like meeting?
We'd like for you to come over here at this podium. It works better for the camera.
I knew I couldn't do that.
That's his first physical labor he's done.
All right, so you all should have a packet of information for the CBDs July 1, 2011 to June 30, 2012, this whole year. I'll do a brief overview of our financials to begin. Throughout the year, our total income was $285,584.05. Total expenses totaled $109,682.10 with a net income of $175,851.95. And that sounds quite nice due to the settlement money that we received last year. So we'll begin using the settlement money in our next fiscal year for advertising purposes, so next year will be different. Going on to another packet of information, we just wanted to share the different successes that the CBDs had in the past year. On the very front page, you'll see that we have an active board, very involved, very much engaged in the community. They're just wonderful board directors. Myself as the director, and then Nancy White, we have her as part-time as the administrative assistant. You'll find a letter from me just explaining that the organization and myself together have grown a tremendous amount in this past year. It's been amazing, the things that I've learned just about the community that I've lived in my entire life and just learned about the industry, too. Some of the most notable milestones that we've had in our first year is we have developed a comprehensive website. We have a 29-page travel guide. We have been awarded two advertising grants from the Division of Tourism for last fiscal year, and just recently, within the past month, we've received two more additional grants. We have gained membership through the Association of CBDs, and we've applied for accreditation, and we should have that accreditation within the next couple of months. We've also advertised Upsher County in over 20 national publications over the past year, and those will only increase because last year, we didn't get off to a -- we didn't get started really advertising until about January, so that's really six-month figures. Future continues. I think we're working towards becoming the operating organization for the conference center. We're working more and more with our local businesses and local organizations, and a lot more with our regional partners, too. Some different marketing successes that we've had in the past year. We have developed a logo that we use on our letterhead, our website, our travel guide, all the advertisements that we place, anything that we do, we have that logo to create some cohesion and help branding Upsher County. So you'll see a picture of our website, and of course, the logo's on the front page. And the website, again, since we just got started last year, these statistics are for about six months, but we had 5,322 visits. Our most popular pages have been the yard sale, our calendar of events, the Starberry Festival page, outdoor recreation, and different fairs and festivals that we have. And the top visiting states surrounding West Virginia, a lot in West Virginia, so we always want to remember that market within West Virginia, but also Pennsylvania, Virginia, Ohio, and Maryland. And you can also see that about 50% of the people who are coming to our website are finding us through search traffic. It's primarily through Google. It's really interesting to see how people are coming to our website. 34% come from referral traffic. If we have an advertisement on the Division of Tourism's website and they click on that link, that's considered a referral to our website. And then 17% is direct traffic, which means they're directly typing in our web address into their browser. The next page, you'll see our travel guide. It's a 29-page travel guide that highlights different features and attractions of Upsher County. To date, we have distributed 16,678 travel guides throughout West Virginia Welcome Centers, different trade shows that we've participated in, all of the requested information of Upsher County. Whenever we have an advertisement in the magazine, if people want more information, they send in all their information, and we send them the travel guides to fulfill that request.
And a couple from out of country, right?
Yeah, yeah. It's amazing whenever the out-of-country ones come in. Yeah, it's fun. Also, top states that have requested information has been Ohio, Pennsylvania, New York, North Carolina, and California. Very odd, I don't know how California got in there. So totally, we've had 20,000 travel guides printed, and we're getting ready to print an additional 10,000. So we're still saturating the market at this point. On the next page, you'll see that Facebook has become a great marketing tool for us. Facebook right now is being such a good success for us that it's the third highest-hit generator to our website. You can see by the end of our last fiscal year, we had 194 likes and some other statistics. We had 23,581 people who actually saw our posts, 1,400 engaged users who actually clicked on our posts to get some more information of what we were discussing on Facebook. So we try to stay very active. We find it's a really fun way for people to engage back with us, and we can get a really good feedback of what people are interested in, what they want to see in the community. Underneath the Facebook information, you'll see just a sample advertisement that we ran in Budget Travel Magazine. And our advertisements, a lot of them are opportunities to partner with the Division of Tourism, so we try to focus on just an engaging photograph that shows off our Main Street or outdoor recreation opportunities, and then a description that covers both our Main Street shopping, dining, and lodging attractions. And then 15 minutes, you can go to the Wildlife Center, go fishing, go hiking, it's all right The next page, you'll see some other examples of the advertisements that we've ran in the past year, and you'll also see a list of locations where we've advertised, Washington Post Online, Long Weekends Magazine, West Virginia Group Tours, Blue Ridge Outdoors Magazine, Civil War Traveler. That's an online advertisement that runs for an entire year, and that one generates a lot of out-of-country requests. It's really amazing to see that. People are very interested in the Civil War, of course, because of the history that we're embracing, the 150th birthday of West Virginia. And we also participate in a lot of advertising opportunities with the West Virginia Division of Tourism through their newsletter and their magazine. The next page, you'll see different achievements that we've already talked about. We are members of the West Virginia Association of CBD and soon should be accredited. We've received advertising grants from the Division of Tourism. We participate in a reunion program through the West Virginia Department of Commerce where if there's a family or even a, I believe, even high school reunions, they can request information, and they'll get free packets of information about West Virginia, free shirts and hats, so we participate in that. We've developed group tour packages. Whenever the Association of CBDs go to different travel shows, they take our information, and we're able to represent Upsher County. So we've had group tour packages put together. We've also put together just a great information sheet about Upsher County whenever those happen. We've also implemented an advertising grant program, which has just kicked off within the past three months, where local businesses and organizations can apply to the CBD for grant money to help advertise their function. And we talked about it this morning at County Commission, but the Blast from the Past Weekend was able to receive $750 in advertising from the CBD. And it was very successful. We had a combination of radio advertisements along with some online ads, and we've received a lot of great feedback from both. And we've also prepared an Upsher County Pride Seminar to host at any time for local businesses, citizens, anybody who's interested in learning about what Upsher County has to offer. You know, we've lived here our entire lives, sometimes we forget about it. So that's another thing that we have hosted in the past, and we're probably going to try to do a fall seminar, a large fall seminar, once things settle down with the summer activities of Upsher County. The last page of the report just goes over what we are looking to do in our next year. We're going to partner more with the Wildlife Center because it is such a unique attraction. There's no other attraction like that in the state, so we're going to be working with them a little bit more extensively. We're also going to try to implement a regional advertising campaign with our county partners of Lewis County, Randolph County, Barber, Webster, and really try to have some regional advertisements run. And we'll also be taking advantage of the Department of Highway Signage System to try to get up some additional directional signs off 33 and maybe even 79 to direct visitors into Buckcannon a little bit more easily. And just a miscellaneous fact sheet, we have approximately 252 hotel rooms, and then you can also see where we've distributed those travel guides. A large portion's been to our West Virginia Welcome Centers. 5,000 approximately has been used for special events, distributing them to regional hotels, shops, restaurants. 3,478 has been sent out to reader requests from our print advertisements, and about 800 have been sent out to national travel shows. Are there any questions?
I have one. You mentioned the operation of the conference center. What is it that the CBD needs from the city council? A motion spread upon our minutes or a resolution that would designate the CBD as the operator there?
Absolutely. Anything you know that just makes that us the official operating organization. That way, we can feel comfortable moving forward in our plans.
Perhaps a resolution.
The advantage of a resolution over a mere motion is you can send it to others as opposed to make a thing of minutes, so we can fix that up.
We'll do that.
What would be the alternative, Kenny, to -- is there any alternative at all?
I don't know what -- I'm sure there'd be alternatives, Dave, but I don't know what good ones there would be. I mean, the Chamber might do it, the Development Authority might do it, you might have a -- city council might hire someone to do it, but it's going to take somebody to have a quasi-ownership in the facility, and I think that the CBD is just the perfect solution for it. You know, we've talked about that for years. Previously, the CBD wasn't interested in that sort of thing, but this CBD seems to be, and I think that's the best catch. Isn't Somersville doing that very thing?
We've been, I've been communicating with their director, too, just to get an understanding of what to expect, and she's been wonderful. And I know there's some other CBDs throughout the state that operate conference facilities, so we'll utilize those resources for sure.
I was just at a conference in Somersville a couple, three weeks ago. Yeah, I mean, they had basically vendors in there, 300, 400 tables in that main conference area, and a lot of people. You know, it's exactly the kinds of things that you're trying to do, is to bring folks to town and have, whether it be an event like the past weekend or whatever it happens to be. And yet, this would allow for indoor types of events, which these guys seem to have a magic touch on, the blast from the past, the weather, but it's not always going to happen, plus you have a lot of winter events.
Absolutely. I've been taking notes of the different organizations and opportunities we'd be able to capitalize on in bringing people into that centers.
What does accreditation mean to the CBD, assuming you are accredited? Does that elevate your status among other CBDs? I mean, what exact, what benefit is there to be accredited?
If you're at the accreditation level, you're pretty much, you've reached the standard of your operating budget and your advertising budget is in line with the correct use of your money. That's come down through the hotel motel tax. It also means that you're fully staffed, you're staffed the correct way, you have policies in place to work with visitors. So it really just means that you've hit that standard where you should be operating.
And is it national or state accredited?
It's a state accreditation.
Are you eligible for more grants from your credit?
Right now, it's not a requirement to be accredited for the larger $10,000-plus grants through the Division of Tourism, but it's strongly encouraged. I think that they have turned down some CBDs for the larger grants in combination of not being accredited due to some other problems, too, but it very much sets their minds at ease whenever they know that they're giving grant funds to an accredited CBD who's going to use it the right way.
On the travel brochure we have, the 29-page brochure, how easy is that to revise and up, you know, and manage? In each printing, could you change something for each printing?
Yeah, each printing, we go through and we do some updates, we swap out photos, and we kind of tweak things as we go, and it's very easy.
I say that because the story, I got married in 1971, and I sent away from brochures from Atlantic City, New Jersey, for a variety of different hotel and honeymoon locations, selecting one that looked absolutely spot-on, magical, like we got married and off and went to go, and it was terrible. And when I got home, I looked closely at the brochures, and they were 1957 Chevrolets.
Well, and that's one of the reasons why we could have a larger amount printed, but we stick to the $10,000 right now being printed because that gives us an opportunity. Right now, every four to five months, we have the opportunity.
You're a good one.
Those old car weekends.
I think we're even on tapes then.
That's true. A couple of things. I know she's got a vacancy on the board of directors.
That would be a tourism appointee by the County Commission.
By the County Commission.
And they're aware of it, but just haven't acted on it yet.
The young gentleman who takes a lot of pictures, I know his name is up here.
Yes.
Will be an excellent addition since he's back in town.
He would be, yeah. Ron is referring to Robbie Skinner, and he's been absolutely, just become a really good friend, but whenever I first started, I lacked in photographs, and everything that we do is about imagery for print advertisements, so Robbie stepped in and gave me any photograph I wanted and said, "Use anything you want," so very talented.
Another point, your Facebook page, who's in charge of that? Who makes your replies and answers all the Facebook inquiries? Does that take up a lot of time?
Not a lot. It kind of helps me ease into the day. Every morning, I sit down and I go through what's happening in Buckcannon, and then I can post it on Facebook, and then, you know, I check it a few times throughout the day, but it's not too bad.
Okay. I'm thinking, and maybe it's been suggested that City Hall and County Commission have Facebook pages.
It's just adding it to your daily routine.
And another question is on giving out of your brochures and everything, do you do anything in conjunction with the Alumni Association of Wesleyan College? Or they have their state conventions for Wesleyan, like in Florida and Virginia and places like that?
We don't, but we recently had a marketing committee meeting, and John Bolts is on the marketing committee for the CBD, and he is going to look into how many brochures possibly Wesleyan would need, so I'll follow up with him about that, but we don't right now.
Good way to get our alumni from Wesleyan back into town for a lot of things, too. Venture Brew's doing fantastic. Nothing but good things to say about you guys. Very proud of it.
I'm very pleased with what's going on.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Laura, thanks so much for coming.
Thank you.
See you. Jerry, you got something you want to talk to us about?
Yep. I want to thank the city of Buckcannon, the street department, Mr. Clemmons, well, even Ron, too. But helping us with the car show or block party, whatever you want to call it, everything went good, didn't have any trouble at all, and it just, it worked great. And I want, of course, Laura done left, but I want to thank her for keeping me going and advising me on things that were available to us, just like the $750 grant, and then advising me about the permit to block Main Street and the permit for the banner to go across Main Street. I had no idea. I want to thank everybody that was involved. It seems like we won't have a meeting until Monday, but everybody is wanting to know when we're going to have another.
Wouldn't this be more than an annual event or just?
I don't think so.
I was going to say, but I would like to see this an annual event.
We're going to try, we're going to try for an annual, but.
Takes a lot of work. Takes a lot of work.
It sure does. A lot of labor, especially for the first time. I was going in several different directions at one time, several times during the last couple of months, but with all the cooperation that we had, it sure made it easier, and I appreciate it. And I'm sure that Rick and the Coppins and Larry Dean, that's the president and vice president. But anyhow, it sure, we know what we need to do now, we've got addresses and so forth, so it's going to be a lot easier.
Be a lot easier at the same time. So I hope you all continue.
Is that time of the year a good time? Pardon, is that time of the year a good time?
Yeah, as long as we can say our rain prayers and keep it like it split the other night. Lordy, I tell you, it was great. We see this big black cloud coming at us, and it just opens up.
Went right around us.
Yeah.
Great. If you do it annually, is good to try and do it at the same time period each year.
We're going to try for annual, and it will likely be the latter part of July, but we'll have to see what is open to us with the other car flows when they're putting on a show. We don't want to step on somebody else's toes.
How many cars did you have, Jerry?
We had 148 that were registered, and that was on Saturday. We think we had about 12 that slipped in on us, and we didn't say anything to them. Somebody heard that may have been.
That hurt. Okay. Thanks a lot, Jerry.
Yes, indeed. Thank you all.
Thank you. Department Board Report, Mitch, not available. Jay Hall, what you got?
Well, Mitch and Jerry get to leave. Oh, I'm just going to go through a rundown of what's happening. It's starting to pick up as far as the activities, even though I hate to see that most of the summer is gone, so I'll just start at what the most up-to-date status on the projects and the ones that are nearing notice to proceed and start. Gateway East Project, the environmental division from the DOH completed their second and final walkthrough on July 8th, and have no noticeable or any major infringements that would prohibit us from starting within the next two weeks. As a matter of fact, we should expect notice to proceed by the second week of August. I've talked to them, and I was like, "Look, you know, we've wasted our entire summer, you know, and you're still holding us to this deadline, but we don't want to ask for it now, but there is a one-time, six-month extension." You know, if we don't get near the completion date of June 20th of next year, we can ask for a one-time extension up to six months. Don't want to play that yet, and we'll see how it goes, but you see how we've lost two months of this summer, you know, we'll probably have to use some of it. I've sent letters out to approximately 45 to 50 property owners, you know, even though the projects will be conducted on City of Buckcannon right of ways. I just wanted to get them involved and let them know about the projects. A lot of them were surprised, you know, they didn't even know it was going on, and explained where the light poles would go and, you know, the new sidewalks and how the retaining walls may or may not have to be replaced. Was speaking with Jerry on some of the retaining wall issues, and we've discussed it, and the ones that are questionable, we're going to go ahead and eat the labor costs to supply, you know, put up a new retaining wall if the property owner buys the materials, the concrete and the reinforcement and like that. You know, instead of them making for the whole thing, and Jerry said, "Well, we're going through, we'll just replace the retaining wall at that time." That's really it. I mean, I've talked to about 25% of those property owners that have received the letters, and most of them are encouraged and they're glad to be involved, even if it's just in notifying them and letting us know what's going on. A lot of them have really appreciated that, so I'm glad to hear those comments. The Army National Guard, that's the one that's really hot on the burners. The right of ways, again, have been sent out to the nine property owners. We have received seven executed ones. Just waiting for one, you know, it's just, we're waiting for one of the parties to come back from their vacation, and we're negotiating one. So that'll all wrap up the property owners and the getting of the right of ways, obtaining of the right of ways. The annexation at this time has been tabled, you know, we're going to look into that next year or, you know, further down the line. I didn't want to wait any longer. I was wanting to wait till I had all the right of ways, but I'd started the detailed design last week because I want to make sure to have enough time to get this into the Bureau for Public Health if they do have any comments or if we do have some difficulty of painting that last right of way. You know, if there's some wiggle room, I'd like to get on, want it as quickly as possible. So I've started the detailed designs. I've updated some costs. It's added about $5,000 to the material costs, and it's just, everybody notified me, you know, "Look, these costs are going up July 1." They've said anywhere between 30 and 35%. We haven't seen those costs yet, but they said it's coming. So I've updated the cost and added about $5,000 to it. We're still looking at starting the spring of 2013. The thing that's keeping me here this week, I was supposed to be on vacation, but the pre-bid for the building, you know, the contract was Tuesday, and we had well over 12 contractors show up. The bid openings will be August 28th, a month from Tuesday, and they hope to do the notice to proceed in late fall for the preliminary groundwork, putting in of storm retention measures, drainage, but they're not actually going to start the actual building construction until early next spring. They want to get through the wet weather. Due to its lateness of getting out to bid, they're not going to actually start the building construction until early next spring, but that's not to prevent them from starting other aspects of the project. Treatment plant and the distribution system evaluations, it's kind of on hold. We've just had a lot of things pop up, and you've got to address those. Tom and I are just about complete with our review. We want to get Sam involved now that he's back and he's finished up with East Main Street and the Ritchie Street Storm Projects. We want him to look over a couple of the treatment processes. Kelly Arnold and I on the distribution side have talked. Ours is not. Even though it's important for the booster stations and the tanks to be looked at and taken care of, it's not going to take nearly as long as what, you know, Tom and I are involved in. So we've scheduled three or four days to talk about upgrades to the distribution system. And we've also, I've also begun investigation into the possibility of construction of a new water storage tank on Victoria Hill. The one at the St. Joseph Hospital is the one that doesn't really work very well with the existing system. There's been some requests or notifications from the Health Department in Philippi that we've got to have additional storage capacity for the entire county since we are the sole provider, and I have concerns about what they're asking because the four PSDs have more than three-day storage in each of their individual systems, but yet, we're being asked to provide three-day storage for everybody, the entire county, not just the City of Buckcannon. And what that does is it causes some problems with the water that we're storing. We can lose chlorine residuals, some contact time, and we feel that we're at a position now that we're adequately, you know, sized in our storage capacity at the city, and that is including the four PSDs. It's not the three days that they're requiring, it's 2.78 days. You know, so depending on which way we go and how they rule, you know, the tank can be anywhere between a million gallons and a million and a half, but we're still in the preliminary discussions. I'm trying to get a determination on that and, you know, explain our situation because I've even had a couple presidents or general managers from the PSD saying that's not a good idea because, you know, you're going to have the stale-tasting water, and it's not a good thing to have. So we've got a couple of PSDs on our side, and I want to take those comments and facts to the Bureau for Public Health and present it further. Island Avenue Waterline, as soon as I'm done with the guard complex, I'm going to do that one, as I've said before. It's not going to be nearly involved because it's not a new extension, it's just a lift and lay. It's a replacement and an upgrade of the existing four-inch line that does not have the ability to provide fire service. You know, I'm going to dead-end it before it crosses over at the bridge on the island, you know, because it doesn't do us any good for the water to go on the other side and it's exposed. We're just going to upgrade the four-inch line with a six-inch line, and I don't anticipate too many problems with that, but I'm hoping to have it done before December, so as soon as Kelly and his crews are finished with the water line out at the guard, I'm not going to give them too much of a break, and they can start right on Island Avenue. not going to give them too much of a break and they can start right on Island Avenue. Speaking of Island Avenue, I'll just jump to those two next. Some of you may or may not know that they're going to do some asphalt eradication and overlay both on Route 20 from the railroad tracks to Victoria Street and from the Island Avenue Bridge right here out to Childers Run. And those will be starting, they've already got the signs up. I can see one right there. That'll probably be starting next week on Island Avenue, go onto Childers Run, you know, intersection. And then when they're done with that, they'll hop over to Route 20 and eradicate and overlay new asphalt there. And then tie into where that's going to end on Victoria Street. Met with the DOH at the end of May to discuss the lane widening. It's been rumored for a long time. It has been in the works, but the lane widening from Victoria to Marion Street, they're looking to add a third turning lane from the intersection of Route 20 and Victoria Streets through the McDonald's stoplights to where it splits off at Marion Street. But what started out as a really simple, oh, that's a great idea. When I asked them to come up and look at our unique situation, you know, they found out that they have some issues, you know, that the sewer would need to be relocated. Their storm drains are not adequately sized. It's not catching where it should be. You know, there's utility poles to consider. There's a relocation of the light at McDonald's. So it went from a real small project to a really big project really quickly. And as a matter of fact, I got an email last week from Mr. White who's heading up this project for the DOH and I want to, the scope of the project is being reconsidered due to these things that we brought up and they've also discovered because they brought their engineering and design division up and they're saying that it's too narrow, these ideas aren't going to work. They would like to do it without having to move any of the sidewalks on either side of the street. It's probably not going to happen. And when you do that, that pushes out the poles that are supporting the light poles, the stoplights. So they're looking into that. They're also conducting environment assessment and our friends at the State Historical Preservation Office are also now looking into the project, even though I don't know anything up there that we should be too concerned about. But they hope to have the final report to me by the end of August and I'll report to you next month. One more to go. West Victoria storm issues. We had, you know, some high-intensity rains, you know, earlier this week, Monday and Tuesday, so much so that I received a lot of calls Tuesday night about the water and rocks and debris tumbling down West Victoria Street. And the DOH was pulling, you know, and it's not their fault, you know, they were pulling ditches, but that's not what caused, you know, that rainfall intensity is what caused all the debris and rock to go and water to overflow the ditches. But they were down there yesterday morning and this morning and discovered that the main drainage line is clogged up. They actually were able to clean the first 25 feet of it, but when they got to the 25th and 26th feet mark, it actually started hooving the road up. You know, I mean, because it was so clogged, so they were going to attack it from the top and just, you know, break it up slowly. They may have to rot it. We may have to go in there and open it up, put a slotted drain in or a perforated drain in. But they're working on it, you know, and assisting the city where they can and we hope to resolve that problem as quickly as possible. That's all I really have.
Questions for Jay?
You mentioned the St. Joe's Tank.
Yes.
And of a concern not meeting the distribution requirements.
Yeah, we can't get it turned over. The tank only turns over once every 33 days.
And is there a solution to that or is it just something?
Hydraulically, it doesn't fit. Hydraulically, it does not fit the system. It was designed as a water suppression system for the hospital and the way that it's piped and, you know, valve, it doesn't work. I haven't began all the detail hydraulics on that, you know, I would look into that, but the last inspection report was not good, you know, where it had not been, you know, maintained and cleaned from on the inside, you know, and its lack of turnover. That was the big thing that everybody has noted, not only our personnel, but also the Bureau of Public Health. You know, it's only turning over once a month.
I understand. The base elevation is not, doesn't fit the rest of the system?
Doesn't fit the system. The overflow elevation does not fit the system. You know, and that's, you know, there are lots of possibilities, but, you know, weighing, you know, the more economical cost as opposed to what everybody's saying in numerous reports, you know, every five years they do an inspection or 10 years they do an inspection, it may be time to consider that one. I've got some preliminary costs, you know, to do the 1.5 million, the worst case if Bureau for Public Health decides to make us go with the three-day storage for everybody, just over $900,000. And that's 55 cents a gallon. That's a pretty good, you know, price, but, you know, we don't want to go spend the $900,000 if we don't have to. But we're going to, you know, we'll look into that. And like I said, I've just started that and that's where we are on the St. Joe Tank. That was my long-winded report, sir.
You're doing good. I'm glad these other guys weren't here. Thank you. Rich.
Primary zoning issue is just to make sure you get your applications in before you need the answer. It does take a little while to process. Ron mentioned Facebook page for the city. Actually, I created one in the midst of the storm and the blackout the other couple weeks ago because the web server is here and we were without power, so there was no webpage. But Facebook is hosted elsewhere, so I was able to put information on there. So there is in fact a City of Buchanan Facebook page. It's not the most popular one I've seen, but it's there and can be used in emergencies to post information and stuff. But just to let you know, we do have one out there out of necessity more than anything else. That's all I have.
Okay. Questions for Rich? David?
Thank you, Mayor. We're working on all kinds of things, most of which will take up under your new business this evening with second readings on ordinances and a new resolution for you to consider. I have a memo that you've been provided with this evening. Mayor Davidson, Mr. Clemmons and I, and on one occasion, our city electrical inspector, John Martini, joined us in a chat. So this is a suggestion that the city council consider a next step with this particular matter regarding electrical inspections, permits and fees. As you know, for many years, our city has conducted various electrical inspections regarding both newly constructed and renovated buildings. Buchanan has long employed and currently employs a very part-time electrical inspector. The city has long charged fees for conducting these inspections and the current fees are set forth pursuant to ordinance number 245 that was effectuated back in 1988. Until John Martini's recent appointment, our city's electrical inspector always was a certified electrician. Now, our city has hired a certified electrical inspector who possesses additional skills and certification beyond an electrician. The electrical inspector works closely with the city zoning and housing enforcement officer and our fire chiefs. Our city is statutorily generally required to abide by the state building and electrical codes with the National Electric Code's 2008 version having been adopted by West Virginia in 2010 and which code is better known as the NFPA 70, National Electrical Code. NFPA stands for National Fire Prevention Association. At the time of our city's last referencing either a building code or electrical code, the BOKA Building and Electrical Codes were then the prevailing codes. BOKA standing for Building Officials Code Administrators International. Back in 1988, electrical inspection fees were determined based upon the number of outlets involved with the new or renovated construction. The minimum fee still assessed by our city is $15 for 40 or less outlets. For more than 40 outlets but less than 80, the fee is $25. For more than 80 outlets, the fee is $25 and 20 cents for each additional outlet. These inspections sometimes can take an hour or two. The fee collected by the city does not begin to adequately compensate the inspector. Perhaps a fairer way to determine fees would be to consider a flat fee calculated upon the square footage of the building or portion of the building that will be subject to the inspection. For example, in the case of an owner adding a 25-foot by 20-foot family room or 500 square feet, if the fee for residential property were, say, 10 cents per square foot, the fee would be $50. And 20 cents per square foot, the fee would be $100. There could be different fee classifications for different classes of property. Example, industrial or commercial property may involve more outlets to be inspected and thus more time and thus a higher fee may be appropriate. Additionally, there are little teeth in our current ordinances to encourage or coerce, depending upon how you want to see this, residential property inspections. While it may be difficult to police every owner who installs their own closet light or connects a ceiling fan and perhaps require the owner to have their work performed by a certified electrician and then further to subject that work to inspection by the city's inspector, if the city's mission is to maximize safety, that is something that our city could aspire to realizing. I encourage our city council to think about advancing a comprehensive electrical installation and inspection ordinance that would address all of the foregoing issues and possibly others arising as our conversation continues. Steps to assure better inspection processes is a quality of life issue and improving inspection processes would be consistent with our city's recent attentiveness to other housing enforcement and quality of life matters such as those addressed with the abandoned car ordinance, the noise ordinance and the currently pending revisions to our city's housing enforcement ordinance. I hope this memorandum helps everyone to understand where Buchanan is at present with electrical installation and inspection a bit better. If you have any questions or comments, please feel free to contact me. And Mayor and Mr. Clemmons may want to chime in a bit. It's, when we talk about fees especially, we're pushing the envelope on 25 years since we increased fees relative to electrical inspections. We don't have a big problem, and I think Rich would agree with this, relative to building inspection costs because that's tied in percentage-wise to the cost of the new or renovated construction. So what might have cost $40,000 back in 1988 probably now cost you $75,000 or $80,000 a day. The fact that it's still a percentage, we collect more fees all the time. But with regard to electrical inspections, they were very flat fees, the 15, $25 amounts that we're talking about. So going to a square footage formula would be more in keeping with being able to raise that accordingly. Rich, Mayor?
One other thing on that issue is that the, 25 years ago, the inspections could be performed by an electrician designated by the city. The state has since adopted a requirement that those inspections be performed by a certified electrical inspector. The gentleman we have working for us now is such and he, you know, he had to take some extra training, he has to carry an extra license that he has to pay for, and he has to carry additional insurance as, for his business in doing these inspections and liability insurance. So the $15 just, I mean, hardly buys us gas. And so we really do need to do something with this. One of the things we talked about was removing, I think in practice we've begun to do so, if somebody wants a entrance inspection, we don't permit that. They do that through the power company because the power company will hook you up unless you've had it inspected. So we don't get into that at this point in time and that probably shouldn't be addressed in our ordinance. But these fees need to be increased and they need to be increased to the point where we can at least break even with the inspector.
How do you define renovation? Like if you wanted to upgrade from 100 amp to 200 amp for your house?
That is defined as a new service and that is not, the city is not going to inspect it. It does need to be inspected, but it's not part of the dividing line. The point at which the city will inspect is what they call the first disconnect, the primary disconnect for the house. Anything towards the power poles is responsibility of the homeowner to have inspected. And the electric company will not hook you up until that is inspected by a state licensed, certified inspector. The wiring inside the house is what the city inspector will now do. And that's changed the state law. That's not a new deal, but it's changed the state law. And we've changed that policy effective July 1. So anything that has to do with a service entrance, anything that has to do with the master fuse box down to the first disconnect is the owner's responsibility to have inspected. And I might just say, I mean, the reason that the city has had forever, that I'm aware of, electrical inspections is primarily because of a safety issue. I mean, if electric is not handled correctly, and I've talked to Mitch about this on more than one occasion, that most of our fires that occur are in fact due to an electrical problem of one sort or another. So, I mean, it's primarily for the safety of the residents and the future residents that might be there. It's not necessary that somebody puts the wiring in as the person always has been moving that structure. But it's primarily a safety issue. Safety for the owners, safety for the residents, safety for apartment that may have to enter the building and stuff.
There's another facet about this, Mr. Clemmons, that you're aware of. And Mr. Cordis, our cameraman, mentioned it to me, reminded me about it before we started our meeting this evening. Many of the lending institutions are now requiring, before you close, a pre-closing building inspection. And if you have a wiring problem, you'd sure rather have it attended to properly, correctly, before you get to that point where you might have to lay out a whole bunch of money to have something rewired, to conform to the code. Or worse yet, it just gets rejected. You're not, you don't have a closing, you lose your sale because of it. So there are some other benefits to making sure that all wiring, even these mundane residential things are done correctly.
Well, there's many historic homes in Buchanan. I used to be the owner of one right across the street from Ron View. And the house still had a significant amount of wiring, particularly for ceiling fixtures and some of the outlets it was posted to. And, you know, you couldn't plug anything in there with any amperage at all and not really cause yourself some serious concern about what was going inside the walls. We need to realize that this is a pretty important safety issue for everybody.
I'd like to advance the discussion. This isn't an ordinance that we're going to come back in two weeks and have a first reading ready for you. I think that you have this fellow who has credentials and certifications that we've not had in this position before, but I think Mr. Martini can help us realize some of the language that he would feel comfortable with in this ordinance. So, but sometime in the next two or three meetings, I would like to be able to come back to you if it's the will of the council with something that I think is going to make us more progressive in this area.
One of the things that John Martini told us, he does a lot of work in Bridgeport. They have a very comprehensive inspection fee system, foundations, framing the rust, the wiring, the plumbing, the heating, and it might be beneficial to see what Bridgeport's doing. Get a copy of it.
We've often swiped things from Bridgeport over the years, borrowed, I should say. And they borrowed a few things we didn't do, so it's all in this together.
Okay. What are some of the charges that surrounding municipalities are charging for their inspection?
That's what I was going to say. I think we're going to be looking at.
And how many inspections do we do on an annual basis?
Mr. Clemmons can, oh, you get.
You've got a list there, a month-by-month basis of what's done. Part of the problem right now is that an individual comes in and purchases a permit to do an electrical job or something of nature. They're entitled to inspections, rough and fine, but it's upon them to in fact acquire them, to call back in and schedule and have that done. So it's not to say that everyone we sell is in fact inspected.
I'm still waiting for one from 34 years ago when I rewired my house. I've not had the first one yet.
Call in. But, you know, it's a matter of when it's done. Homeowner's responsible for calling in. Now, you know, if we provide a little different fee structure, we may be able to provide him with the capability of going out and checking to make sure.
Is the homeowner made aware that it's their responsibility to make these contacts?
Right.
Okay.
Well, I think it needs a revisit. We'll continue. What else you got?
Do we need a motion to do that?
I think it's a big safety issue, what it comes down to me. It's a safety issue for the people.
Yeah, I don't think we need a motion at this time. We're just... We're just starting this conversation.
It's going to be a couple of months before we're really ready to act.
But we need to move on this, this Sunday's beginning.
I've mentioned to you all a couple of times, and I, and I had a discussion earlier this week with Mr. Doss and Pete Rees, that we really do need to have some signs made. I'm not a big sign person, just for the sake of putting signs up, but it would be difficult if someone was to be cited under our new noise ordinance that wasn't in effect just last week, if they don't know that we have such a thing, particularly motorists. So Michael Doss and I were talking about something short, sweet, simple, that might just say Buchanan motorists, noise ordinance in effect, something, yeah. And posted at the six or eight primary entryways into the city around the place. I'd like to get the council's input, feedback on that before Michael has Jerry Arnold actually make the signs, but I'm looking at it, at, on down the road, if somebody is cited, and somebody invariably soon will be, we've get, we've, we've furthered along this notice part of the due process mechanism. And I think the other thing that we need to be mindful of, we, we haven't had any training yet for our police officers. Oftentimes, they're going to be using the decibel gun, either the one that we've already acquired or a later one that we may acquire. I think it's important that these guys, it's similar to knowing how to use a breathalyzer or some other equipment that they use that later on will be used as evidence before the municipal court.
I would note that too, you've mentioned that the, the noise ordinance is on the city webpage, on the ordinance page, so people would like to review it if they can.
Well, I like the ideas of signage. I think it, a simple sign, noise ordinance in effect, in large letters, and then in small letters, we can actually put the least number XYZ, 112, whatever.
We can't say jake break ordinance in fact.
That's correct.
But we have a comprehensive noise ordinance. I'm seeing a lot of head nodding, so I guess we will proceed with some simple signs. The only other thing that I would mention, we are making slow but sure progress with our annexations. All the title work is done. I've actually been typing the petitions that will soon be delivered. I've actually sent a couple of emails to the folks that are my primary contacts, and Mr. Ludlow and I will be going through the list to see who's going to approach the property owners to have those petitions signed, and soon we'll have the full thing ready for council's action. Been helping Mr. Hall in just a bit with some of the Brushy Fork annexation issues, but Jay's done an excellent job for us, as you, as you know, so more to follow on that next time.
The other annexation you're talking about is 20 North.
About 20 North and Brushy Fork are the two that we're working on right now. All my other stuff is under good business.
Question for Dave. Okay, brings us down to our consent agenda, approval events of the meeting of July 19, building and wiring permits, payment of bills, police department grant application resolution number 201207. Should we consider that? Does that require?
Doesn't require a roll call.
Okay, include that. Relocate the 10-minute parking space to rear City Hall lot. That's this 10-minute parking space on the street is creating a traffic snarl. We're going to eliminate parking there and provide parking back here for visitors.
And gateway east, the traffic enhancement aisle, so be, just to add to that, I was looking through, sir, that, you know, I want to narrow the sidewalk on the south side, which is the side opposite City Hall, by five feet, so that'll also help eliminate some of that traffic pottering that we have at the curb.
These six, start, set starting, pay for season employees at $8 an hour. We found out we're paying some 8, some 725, some 750. That's not fair, so do that. Employee Robert Barber has city court culturest acceptance of the park committee report. All these things are in your packet. Request to close portion of Hart Avenue for Chapel Hill event, close Main Street view, Spring Street block for 3rd Annual Arts Festival, Jalboon Park for the 2013 festival Fridays, that's their scheduled events for next year, Jalboon Park for Back to School event on August 18, 2012. Another item that's in your packet but is not included on the agenda, Chapel Hill requests the use of the walk trail area around the basketball court on August the 12th. That's a Saturday from 5 to 8. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Seven.
There a second?
Second.
Motion made in second of discussion, all in favor, signify, so we're saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The ayes have it. Brings us down to strategic issues for discussion and vote, and then Dave, I think it's back in your court.
Thank you, Mayor. I have provided to you, I think, three different documents, one of which the mayor actually received, I think it was just Monday that we talked about this, a cover letter from our friends with Sudden Lake. There was an article in the, in the newspaper just a week or so ago that indicated Sudden Lake was being sold. There have been times in our TV cable history where that would be a big deal. One time in particular that we filed a lawsuit after we were notified about the sale of the company. This is, this is not what I would call an arm's length sale and purchase. Jerry Kent, who is the current president and chief executive officer for Sudden Lake, is actually, has some new partners, and he and these new partners, I'm told out of Canada actually, are buying all of Sudden Lake. There's an internet piece that I've given you this evening that indicates that there is no anticipated changes relative to TV lineups. They're going to still be headquartered in St. Louis, Missouri. They are going to be pressing for new subscribers, which means they might be trying to buy out some other cable companies, which is a good thing for us. Now, you may ask, if they go from 3.4 million subscribers to, say, 5 million subscribers, how is that good for Buchanan? You might recall recently with Sudden Lake, and now more recently the Dish Network, losing some of the services like American movie classics, or the threat that they were going to lose them. There's been discussions about one of the services, one of the cable, one of these providers dropping the ESPN line because they're so expensive to carry. If you go to the table when you negotiate with the ESPNs and the Foxes and the AMCs of the world, and you have five or six million subscribers as opposed to two or three million subscribers, you have much bigger clout with those companies. So that's what this is about. They are planning on upgrading facilities, offering better products. The notice has been received that this sale is going to take place, and they are required, under the terms of our franchise agreement, which incorporates provisions of state and federal law, we're required to be contacted if there's a change of ownership, and this is right out of our franchise agreement that was adopted by the city council in 2009. Let me just read through this real quickly. Resolution number 2012-08 of the Council of the City of Buchanan, approving the change of control of Buchanan's cable television franchise. Whereas Sudden Lake Communications, franchisee or Sudden Lake, owns, operates, and maintains a cable television system serving Buchanan pursuant to a franchise agreement, the franchise, issued by the city, the franchise authority, the terms and provisions of which franchise agreement are embodied in City of Buchanan ordinance number 347, and franchisee is the duly authorized holder of the franchise, and whereas Sequel Communications Holdings LLC, Sequel, the parent company of the franchisee, has entered into a purchase and sale agreement, the agreement, with Nespresso Acquisition Corporation, Nespresso, pursuant to which all of the issued and outstanding equity interests of Sequel will be acquired by Nespresso, the transaction, and whereas franchisee has requested the consent of the city council for the change of control of the franchise in connection with the transaction, in accordance with the requirements of the franchise and applicable law, and has filed with the city an application on FCC Form 394 that includes relevant information concerning the transaction and Nespresso collectively, the application, and whereas the city has reviewed the application, examined the legal, financial, and technical qualifications of the relevant parties, and followed all required procedures to consider and act upon the application, and whereas the city council believes it is in the best interest of the community to approve the application and the change of control of the franchise in connection with the transaction, as is described in the application, now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Buchanan as follows. One, the Council of the City of Buchanan hereby approves the application and consents to the change of control of the franchise in connection with the transaction, all in accordance with the terms of the franchise and applicable law. Section two, the city council's approval of the application and its consent to the change of control of the franchise in connection with the transaction shall be effective immediately, and Sudden Lake shall notify the city of the closing of the transaction promptly after the closing date, provided however that this resolution shall be considered null and void if the transaction is not consummated. And finally, section three, this resolution shall have the force of a continuing agreement with franchisee, and the City of Buchanan shall not revoke, amend, or otherwise alter this resolution without the consent of the franchisee. This is very administrative. The mayor has looked through the extensive packet. I have the, the one three-ring binder right here, which anybody and everybody is free to look at. I think everything there is in proper form, and I encourage you to act upon this resolution favorably this evening.
Entain a motion to approve resolution number 2012-08 of the city council, see if I can.
Still moved.
Motion made, is there a second?
I'll second that.
And a second. This requires a roll call, but.
Dave Thomas?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Ron?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Motion.
We'll require your signatures before you leave, so he may pass that down. Go ahead, Dave. Well, recommendation, this mausoleum at Hever Cemetery, we have a letter from Heinz Coons, Terry Reed. I'll save you some air here, Dave. Let me run through this. There's a, it's to myself and the city council, re, referencing mausoleum at Hever Cemetery. There was at some time to pass a trust established known as the Buchanan Memorial Park Mausoleum Trust. Several years ago, the sole trustee, Deborah E. Cutright, resigned as trustee, delivered to my office a checking account information. I am the fiduciary commissioner on the trust. There's presently in the trust account the sum of approximately $33,990.71. There's been no activity on this account for several years. It's my understanding that there are problems associated with the mausoleum which need to be resolved. I've been unable to find anyone willing to serve as successor trustee. Unless a successor trustee is appointed and starts utilizing the account, at some point the bank account will by law be closed and those monies paid over to the state of West Virginia. The most logical resolution is for the City of Buchanan to take over the trust account and use those monies to undertake the necessary work required in the mausoleum. It is my understanding that this required work involves hazard. Sincerely, Terry Reed. It's my recommendation, the city council, that we reject this offer. I don't know what kind of work is required, but I don't think that $33,000 will perpetually maintain that mausoleum, and that's what we're buying into. We have enough of a perpetual liability just keeping the grass low down there. So I would entertain a motion to reject this offer from Terry Reed and notify him accordingly.
Still moved.
Motion made. There a second?
I'll second.
Second a motion. Any discussion? I've heard.
Let me, because I'm not part of the cemetery, cemetery cemetery. Is it not?
Cemetery's was consolidated.
Consolidated. Is mausoleum in place? Is the city owned mausoleum?
No.
It's privately owned.
It's privately owned mausoleum. And I, I know some of the history on that, because my mother's family, one side of her family was shocked. And I remember being a small boy when Frank shot one of mom's cousins, came to try to sell a spot in the mausoleum, thus that, I don't know whether he was doing it or he was selling for somebody when that mausoleum was built. But, and I don't, and I haven't inspected it, and I'm not going to, it's not ours, we have no liability for it, it's clearly a privately owned facility, and, and I don't think, like I said, if they had $3 million, that's, well, maybe we consider that, but they don't. They got $33,000, and for us to assume perpetual maintenance on that building is, it's just not good business.
And just a matter of curiosity, do you know if, if all the slots in the mausoleum are taken out?
I do not. I do not.
I believe they're, if they're not filled, they're close to them, but I think the biggest problem is the building's quality.
Yeah.
And leaking, et cetera, and so on. So it's, if you go out and inspect it, you'll, I think, come to that conclusion about 10 or 15 feet away.
Okay, so, so where does the city stand in as far as the hazerness from that building leaking and everything goes to?
Not on our part. We, we have no responsibility for it.
No responsibility for that.
None whatsoever. We've taken a look at the purchase agreement of the cemetery. We are bound, when we bought the cemetery from John Post years ago, 60s, late 60s, I believe, some late 60s, and the, any burial rights or anything like that that had previously been sold, we were obligated to honor. But that mausoleum's not mentioned anywhere, but it was, it was a private entity, and we don't want it. I'm just convinced that we do not want that.
I don't think we want it either. I'm just worried about if there is a hazard out there by Terry Reed. Whose responsibility is it to take care of that hazard to keep it from being detrimental to the citizens?
Potentially, under the city zoning. I'm not being flippant by saying it's really not a housing enforcement issue, but there are some provisions relative to nuisance structures in the zoning ordinance, under zoning ordinance 244, that could avail us of the opportunity to pursue condemnation of the mausoleum. I'm not suggesting that at this time, but if, if things get bad enough, there is some recourse. Cemetery is in the corporate loans.
Has Mr. Reed made any statements as, as far as the ownership of the mausoleum as to, what's being done at all for, for these?
I think this letter.
Listen, this is, there was at some time in the past, no doubt, a trust established known as the Buchanan Memorial Park Mausoleum Trust, period.
And that's it?
That's it.
That's it.
And.
I'll call for any question.
If any of you's been a trustee of any particular entity, you know that it's yours. Question been called. We're all in favor of the motion, signify, so we're saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Ayes have it. David?
Mayor, this is the second of two readings, ordinance 366. Ordinance number 366 of the City of Buchanan, and ordinance one, formally establishing the position of city administrator and describing the duties, authority, and requirements associated with the position. Two, merging the duties and authority of the position of city treasurer with the duties and authority of city administrator. Three, amending ordinance number 318 of the City of Buchanan, that is, the city's employees' administrative ordinance, by redesignating the city administrator and not the city recorder as the administrator of ordinance number 318. And four, designating for all purposes the city administrator as the city's human resource manager for all city employees, including the employees of all of the city's utility boards. You recall that you approved this on first reading at the last council meeting. If you approve it tonight, this ordinance would become effective on September 1, 2012. It's my recommendation that you act favorably upon ordinance 366 on second reading.
Motion to approve ordinance 366.
Still moved.
Second and a second. Further discussion, all in favor, signify, so we're saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Ayes have it. One other item there, and it may be premature, but I would recommend that we employ Michael Doss, officially employ Michael Doss, as the city administrator effective September 1. Can we do that tonight?
Since it's not on your agenda, and it doesn't hurt, I would, I would just go ahead and put it on your agenda for August 16.
There you go.
We had talked about that earlier. We had talked about that earlier in the week, and I forgot to mention it to Mr. Clemmons, so I apologize, but.
You don't have to apologize, I just ignore you.
August.
All I used, yeah. And just in general, not to be informational here, is that the agenda by state law, or at least Ethics Commission says, must be posted by closed business or closed business on Monday. So it's not the fact that we can get something on very quickly. If it's not there Monday afternoon, it won't be there, it can't go.
Okay. Are you ready for the next one? This is ordinance number 367 of the City of Buchanan, and ordinance one, amending ordinance number 170 of the City of Buchanan, that is Buchanan's housing enforcement ordinance. Two, adopting the statutory provisions of Chapter 8, Article 12, Section 16A of the West Virginia Code as amended, entitled Registration of Uninhabitable Property. And three, adopting the statutory provisions of Chapter 8, Article 12, Section 16C of the West Virginia Code as amended, entitled Registration of Vacant Buildings, Registration Fees, Procedures for Administration, and Enforcement. I've had some discussion about this with Mayor Davidson and Mr. Clemmons, and I think everybody that I've talked with is supportive of this on second reading. Remember the last time since you had kinda gotten it on really quick first draft, I suggested that we do this as a three-reading ordinance? If you act favorably upon this tonight, since this is in that realm of housing matters and building code matters, it would be necessary for me to deliver a legal notice to the local newspaper and to have a public hearing before you read this or considered it on third reading at your August 16 meeting. It's my recommendation that you consider now ordinance 367 on second reading.
Motion to adopt 367, not adopt. Pass on second reading on ordinance number 367. There a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify, so we're saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Brings down the comments. David Thomas, you have anything?
The, I would like to go into executive session for about three minutes. That's all.
Subject?
Litigation.
Litigation, okay. We'll talk about that in a minute.
I like David's statement, too.
Okay. Rich?
Just appreciate the folks that worked hard on the blast from the past. I think that was a fantastic event for Buchanan. Hope you do it again next year. And would encourage other groups out there with similar ideas. I remember when you first, folks first showed up, maybe back in February sometime. I think we're kind of surprised and responsible. You know, this is great. This is the kinds of things that help keep Buchanan what it is. Appreciate your time and effort. Good job.
It helped out some of the merchants.
Good.
That's good.
Great.
Had a lot of good comments.
Great event.
That's all I have. Ron?
Yeah, all ditto. Rich's remarks about the blast from the past, and also to some of the merchants that did not stay open Friday night and Saturday night, they really don't know what they missed out on economically by being closed.
Good turn. Scott?
I've got the privilege to serve on the waste board, and tonight we had a meeting, and the recyclable collections were significantly down for June and July. And as the discussion went along, discussed why that was taking place, out of the Crossroads Recycling Center at Walmart complex, the containers are being filled with just about anything. In order for recycling to effectively work, paper needs to go in the paper, the plastic needs to go in plastic, et cetera. And what has happened, and I can understand partly so, is when we had our storm, storms and the power outages, people would take a lot of their spoiled food, et cetera, and having no other place to put it, they would conveniently put it in the recycle bins. But what that does, it contaminates the entire recycle bin. We don't expect our city crews to go in there and separate that out, and so recycling was significantly down. Also, as, just to point and comment, when plastic is mixed in with the cardboard or plastic is mixed in with the papers, it is not economically feasible for us to separate that. Therefore, it all gets jumped. So to those who are out there recycling, thank you very, very much for making that effort. But for those who are not taking that extra little bit of effort to put where things belong, the paper in the paper, the plastic in the plastic, I'd ask you to take care of that, 'cause it does no good, it does not help the environment, certainly does not help the efforts we have as a city that actually has a recycling program. Also, there's a bunch of litter around, and you can see that just about any time. If you put your little blue bin in there and a paper blows out, we'd ask that you pick up the one blue paper, and thank you for the 99 that made it in the basket the first time. That's all.
And for those of you who are inclined to do so, if you see someone putting things in out there at Crossroads at Walmart that don't belong, if you'll write down a license plate, we'll give them a talking to.
We discussed this evening 24-hour surveillance cameras.
Yep.
We discussed actually physical sort of, you know, personnel surveillance. We discussed a fine structure for those identified and caught abusing the recycling regulations out there, all under discussions at this time. Understand we have a new pallet wrapping machine that may be employed to.
Wrap offenders.
Wrap up some offenders and put them on public display. I'm sure I'll have some comments about that.
Scott's with that a long time.
Little bit of humor.
Okay. I have just one item, due to my oversight. We ended up with our appointments, the list of appointments, we have four members of city council on the Stockard Board. That constitutes quorum. That's not really legal for us to do so. So I talked with Dave Thomas, and he has agreed to step down, and I would want to nominate for your consideration Pam Martin to be on the Stockard Board. And I would entertain a motion to that.
So moved.
Motion made by Dave Thomas.
Second.
And second. Any discussion on the matter? All in favor, signify, so we're saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. At the request of Councilman Thomas, I would entertain a motion to enter into executive session, as per West Virginia Code 698, as for, for discussion of possible litigation.
So moved.
Motion made by Dave. Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The rest of you, that means, skedaddle, Dave, you will stay. Please.